I'd like to call this meeting the Princeton City Council's order, clerk call role please.
Mayor Mabry.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Gomez, McCall.
Here.
McCransky.
Here. Would you please stand and join us in the flag allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America, and he's a republic where which stands one nation under God, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna go now to public comment period. We have public comments at the beginning of the meeting as well as at the end. And I know we have one gentleman here that's gonna come speak to us during public comment, Jim, from the public service. Why don't we go ahead and start with you?
Aye.
Glad to have you, Jim. Just go up to the podium. Speaker's already on.
Alright, cool. Thank you. Nice to, nice to see you. I don't, I usually don't need the microphone, so I can speak loud enough. So, nice to see everybody. I hope everybody's doing, doing okay. The reason I'm here tonight is Quint had reached out to me in regards to some recycling questions. And I met with Pete, was it last week or week before or something like that?
It's a blur to me now, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, it's blurred to me too, yeah. And wanted me just to come in and talk to you guys a little bit about what's going on at the transfer station, you know, as far as recycling, because I know there have been some loads that have been rejected lately and that. So, here basically just to kind of touch upon that and then answer any questions, you know, hopefully that you guys have. So, what's basically, there's been a lot of, a lot of contamination within the recycling, you know, stuff that's not recyclable. We've got, you know, styrofoam in there, there's, there's plastic bags, you know, the Walmart bags, things of that nature, egg cartons, a lot of greasy pizza boxes. We're just seeing a lot of, you know, a lot of contamination, a lot of stuff that shouldn't be in there and it should be in the garbage, okay? So, we were, ended up basically rejecting some loads. And it's not, it's not that we, you know, we're not the end all because we have to take it to a facility, a recycling facility in Scott County, Iowa. That's where, that's where this material goes from here. Their regulations are fifteen percent or less contamination. So, if we see that it's got more than that, which previous to Quint and I talking, you know, the loads were well above that. And that's why they were rejecting the loads. You know, so that's why we in turn got with Scott County and they were, they were saying, "Look, if, if the loads are gonna be that bad, we don't want them." Because what basically ends up happening is we truck it all the way out there, and that's an expense for us. And then they reject the load and take everything to the landfill, then they charge us because it's, you know, because it's bad. So, basically what we were doing is saying, "Oh, okay, if the load's bad, let's just reject it right away and save that double cost of us taking it out to Iowa City, or taking it out to Iowa and getting it rejected." So, Quint's really been working good as far as getting the guys on the street to take a little bit extra time with the recycling and starting to leave some stuff that's, that's garbage. You know, you guys have got a lot of repeat offenders, you know, that, that put out garbage, you know, all the time. They bury it. Quint even said, he goes, "Yeah", he says, "They, they, they're, they're good at it, especially in the cans." Not the bins. The bins are pretty clean, but the cans that residents set out, there's some garbage in there that's at the bottom, and by the time the guys dump it, it's already in the hopper in the truck. At that point in time, it's relatively too late. You know, so what we're doing, I think, is good because hopefully we'll get everybody educated well enough so when you do introduce the carts, you know, maybe this is gonna limit some of that, that download. You know, I was on the website today, on Princeton's website, and I was excited to see that you guys have a link to our website, recycling simplified dot com, however it's buried. If it can be a little bit, you know, if you guys can move it, it's just in one of the, I noticed it in one of the, the public announcements that was on there. So, it's, it's nice that you guys have it on the website, which is great, but it's a little bit harder, it's a little bit harder to find. If it was more pronounced, maybe on the, on the first page or something like that. It's an absolutely wonderful website. It's all free. Nothing, doesn't cost you anything to download material. You can do mailers, postcards, things of that nature, and it's a great resource for the residents to go on and see exactly what they can and what they can't, you know, put in the recycling.
What do you mean, we can do posters or flyers?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I'd say, you're saying print that and then we put in there or something?
Yeah, you can, these are, these are just a couple here that are downloaded passive that, that are right off of the, off the website. So, you can download anything you want. It's all free. The, the residents can go on the, you know, on the website, especially around holidays, I know holiday times are coming. There's great videos on wrapping paper, you know, glitter bows and things like that, what can be recycled, what can't be recycled. Greasy pizza boxes, egg cartons, styrofoam cups, you know, things of that nature. So, there's a lot of resources, a lot of, a lot of, you know, educational material on that website.
You know, all those vendors for a while now, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, this is, this is recycling simplified dot com.
I, I went there and I did not see it, because I was, the ones that I saw didn't even talk about glass. And here now, I see there's glass on here.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, it's, you go on to the, you go on to recycling simplified dot com, and it's, it's on the municipal page. There's a dropdown, there's municipal, there's all, there's a, it's a header, I think that's, and all of that is, you can download it, you can put, you know, if you want to do postcards, you can do that. I don't know how you guys do your bills. Is it, is it a postcard or is it a mailer?
By an envelope.
Okay, so if it's in an envelope, you guys can, can download some stuff and just piggyback a flyer.
Because it sounds like our residents have forgotten the rules. And we have a lot of residents, Jim, that will never get to this point, but aren't that smart.
Where, every community's gonna have that. Every, you know, it's, it's a, it's a constant battle. It's just we need to keep, you know, as community leaders, we need to keep out in front of it. And us as a company, you know, need to keep educating people, you know, and like I said, it all starts at the curb. And if the drivers are a little bit more picky on what they pick up, it's just gonna clean that waste, it's gonna clean that stream up even more, and we're not gonna have this issue moving forward.
Do we just start getting worse like last couple of months, or, or we just finally put our foot down? This happened for a long time. As far as how bad we're at now.
Yeah, it's been going on for quite a while. We've just been getting a lot of pressure from, from our vendors that we deal with. It's like, you know, we can't accept this anymore. You know, ever since, you know, I came back in, in twenty eighteen when China stopped taking the material, you know, these third-party merchants, these municipal recycling facilities over the column, you know, they're, they're really putting the hammer down. Like I said, we have, we have to hold to that fifteen percent contamination. You know, and, and before China, before China sorted, you know, they were allowing up to fifty percent contamination because the material was worth something. You know, they still had an outlet for it. Now that's completely gone. So, their contamination rate, their, their, their acceptance of contamination has dropped way down in that. So, they're getting more picky, we're getting more picky. So, we have to, we have to basically go back to our source and say, "It, it has to be cleaned up."
Is paper from a shredder acceptable?
Yes.
Because I thought I went along the way somewhere, that a piece of paper smaller than metal?
No, post shredded papers, actually, that's, that's actually the good stuff, you know. What we're, what we're also experiencing, not only in Princeton but in other communities, is bagged material. It cannot be bagged. Um, because what, it, it, a lot of residents just put it in a dark garbage bag. Well, when it, when it goes to the recycling center, they don't, they don't know that it's recycling. They just figure it's trash and that. So, even in clear, even if, if it's in a clear bag, you know, the problem that we run into, because we used to tell everybody, "If it's in a clear bag, it's fine. As long as we can see what it is, it's fine." What's happened now is that the recycling facilities don't have the manpower to go in there and cut open these bags and things of that nature. So, now they're basically saying that everything needs to be, everything needs to be loose so that way they can, they can sort it a lot, a lot easier.
I've been in that facility actually, Scott County, one of, surprised how clean it was. There's literally people conveyor belts coming down, they're literally picking through that stuff by hand.
Yeah, exactly. And they don't, that's, that's when, so when that, when a bag comes down, the chute, or when a bag comes along the conveyor belt, they just toss it in the garbage because they don't have, you know, they don't have the time to go through the bag, rip it open, discard the bag, things of that nature. So, you know, on the website, it's, we preach constantly, empty, clean, and dry.
Do you talk about the numbers for the plastic containers, one through five, six is unacceptable and all that? That's all there?
Yep.
Wow.
Yep, there's, there's pretty much detailed information.
The community is not aware of this, Jim.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a dropdown menu as far as, as resident, that residents can go on as well. And it's educational material. You know, we, I've turned on a lot of teachers to this website so they can, you know, go in and present to their childrens.
Is anybody here familiar with all of this? And I'm just kind of somewhere in the fog.
Yeah, it was on our utility bill ten, a couple of years ago. But we were also told during COVID, put in plastic bags, clear plastic.
Clear bags?
Yeah.
Yeah, at one point in time, clear bags was, was, was acceptable. But now that we're no longer, we're, we're post-COVID, and everybody's aware that there's a job shortage or a worker shortage out there. So, now they've basically, basically restated that it's no more, no more bags, because they just don't have the manpower there to, to do it.
Are you saying no glass? Did I hear you say?
No, we take glass. Yeah, we accept glass. Yeah.
Jim, but the link that you have on our website, the link that you shared with us, I, I looked and looked, there's nothing on there about glass, shredded paper.
Yeah, there's the, the ones that I just downloaded.
And all of a sudden appeared. Now let's check.
Yeah, there's, 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 yeah, there's, there's different because some, some facilities don't take glass. So, there's, there's even Spanish versions on the website. So, there's some handouts, there's some handouts that, that don't include glass. You just have to go on and find the right one that says glass.
Jim, is it possible for Republic to give us a clean copy between those pages that we could duplicate on our own? But I mean, a nice crisp, original, finely printed?
It's better off if you guys do it yourself, because then you can take it to the printer, rather than me having to...
Just drop the link.
Yeah, you, yeah, you can download right off the link.
Add everything? Is that all the pages?
Yeah, that's, well, there's, there's a, the one that, oh, there's tons more. You can print billboards if you want. Um, but the, the one Quint's holding now in his left hand is a, is a trifold, you know, so it's printed on front and back. So, what you can do, and the other one, is just print it on the front. So, what you can do is you can download, you can download that PDF, take it to a printer, and they can print it. Or you can basically, because I, because I saw the one that's on the website, it's just the wrong one that doesn't have the, the glass.
Right.
You know, so that, if you can just download the, download the, um, the, the correct one and swap that, and like I said, move that link, Republic, you know, the recycling simplified link, move that somewhere where it's, it's easier to find. Any little thing helps.
Teresa, are you familiar with all of this? I mean, is it easy for us to?
Yeah, it's easy to download them and get them on the website. I think, uh, Jim's saying is that we put it somewhere that's highly visible. So, you don't have to dig through anything to find it. Um, and we can, we can download them and print them nice.
Can we insert in the, in utility bills?
Yeah.
Yeah, they've got, there's a, there's a, uh, there's a postcard kit that you can download, and it's, it's the size of a, you know, it's got all the information on the size of a postcard. So, or if you've got the, you know, the trifold, you can put that in there. There's, you just have to go through the website and find out what you, what you need, because it's, it's all there. And like I said, there's quite a few videos on the website as well that residents can watch and...
Now, earlier you mentioned that our recycling loads were rejected. Now, you, I mean, from what I was told, that all of August and August, all of September, all of our loads were rejected.
There was, I mean, was it nine?
There was nine loads were accepted, twenty-three were, um, denied in August. September, no loads were accepted. Now, I was just informed three weeks ago about this, and that's when I started questioning you and getting this information. I just wondered, if, if, our driver just happened to, see, he'll, he'll go back the second time to dump his garbage, and he gets the recycling ticket from that morning, and he just happened to notice it said garbage. So, he just, for the next few days, he, he just kept noticing it said garbage. So, then he told me about it. So, how long has this been going on? I mean, I would think if you noticed our loads not getting accepted, you should have called me or somebody so we can get this going.
Yeah, I wasn't, I...
You've been wasting our time.
Yeah, I wasn't aware, until you brought it to my attention, you know, I wasn't aware that the load were being rejected. You know, because I don't, you know, I don't handle the transfer station, you know, so I mean, that's, that's, you know, not, you know, but, you know, Joe probably should have gotten hold of you sooner and said, "Hey, you know, we're rejecting the Princeton loads. Can you reach out to Princeton?" And that, and that's so, a little bit, a little bit more proactive, you know. Um, but yeah, I, until I, until I found out from when you contacted me, I'm like, then I called Joe and I said, "What's going on?" He's like, "Yeah", he said, "They're just, they're garbage. There's so much stuff in them. It's just, you know, we have to, we have to landfill it." I said, "Okay, so let me reach out to the city." And that's when, you know, after, after you had called me and I'd reached back out to you and you and I, I talked to Joe this morning, and, you know, right now, we're not getting any flack from Scott County with the loads. So, until we, you know...
Since, uh, since September twenty-ninth, all loads have been accepted.
Yeah.
But, uh, amongst eleven loads or so.
Yeah, and, and, and we've noticed the difference, because I talked to Joe, and Scott County's noticed the difference, and they're, you know, they're like, "We appreciate you guys doing everything you can." There's still some communities that we gotta work with, obviously. But, you know, I think we're, I think, you know, we're, we're headed in the, in the right direction here. It's just that the guys, and I know it, it's, it's not easy, you know, to say, to have them spend a little bit more time, you know, on the route. But if you want the loads to be, to be continually accepted, they have to, they have to leave stuff. You know, they, if they see something that's, that's questionable, then, you know, they leave it.
Yeah, and I do have to say, you know, I fielded a lot of phone calls, Jim, Lori, Lisa, they fielded a lot of phone calls, and with door to door to a lot of homes, um, since, our loads have been cleaner.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's good. But I just need to keep informing these...
So, do we think we have the tools we need to educate the community with these?
Well, if you get some stuff like this, like, insert into, like, our utility bills, everybody would get one.
And then move it to another place on the website?
I, I think, and we've talked over and over about this. I think it's, it's just a re-education of, for the public on what's acceptable. I honestly think once a year at minimum, you just gotta keep this stuff in front of their face. You have new residents coming.
I think you do it two, three, two, three times a year.
Yeah, that's why, you know...
Just every three or four months or something, put it in.
Especially as we get the new codes.
And what I usually, what I usually do for my communities is each year I give them an updated calendar for the, for the next service year. And on the reverse side is, is the recycling dues and don'ts. So, that way, if the city decides, city or village decides to send it out to those residents, they make it available at, at city or village hall. So, that way residents can come in, get a copy of the calendar, and on the reverse side is a copy of the accepted materials. You know, so it's, it's something that every year they, you know, they do get a refresher on that.
Jim, I have a question if you would please. So, let's just take this real quick and quick. So, the, the city garbage trucks, they go around, pick up garbage. Then they, uh, drop all the garbage off. They take that same garbage truck, they go back and they do the route for recyclables only. They collect recyclables, and then the next morning about five or four forty-five, they send them, a man out there with recyclables out to, to public services. He weighs, they, the truck gets weighed like any other thing, uh, any other garbage truck, they get weighed. They go onto the floor, they're at transfer station, they dump the recyclables on the, on the floor. At that point, the driver, the end loader then is making the decision whether he's accepting that load or not. Because he'd be the one looking at that load. Otherwise, that load then, I would take it, load it into a trailer with recyclables, right?
Yeah, because we, we load this, we load the recycling the first, first thing in the morning. We get all the recyclables taken care of before we do the, before we do the trash.
Off your floor.
Yep, so we know that it's, whether it's clean or contaminated, it sits by itself.
Okay, so that, that truck driver, the garbage truck driver should really know if he's stuck around for a minute, he's gonna get, they're gonna, that loader, end loader operator's gonna make a judgment call whether it's acceptable or not. And then those recyclables, they get, uh, either then pushed over for garbage or put on this trailer with recyclables. Are other comp, are other companies or communities recyclables being intermeasurable with ours on that trailer, or is it just Princeton only?
You guys are the first ones to come across the scale.
Okay, but the first, but when that trailer goes to Scott County though, there's other communities recyclables on that trailer.
If it's clean, it goes on the trailer. If not, it's, it goes, it goes to the...
So, but when they reject it over there at Scott, Scott County, Scott, Scott County, it may be intermingled with a lot of other communities, right? That, or, or your own recyclables that you pick up. You pick up recyclables too on a contract basis, right?
Yes, we do.
But, my point with the V is on contract, how, how do they, Scott County say that we're the ones, Princeton's one was?
Oh, we're not, we're, no, no, we're not saying that you guys are, we, we, you guys aren't the, the only offenders. We're not, we're not saying that. It's, 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 it buzzed, it basically was the loads that we were taking over there.
Got you.
You know, and they were getting rejected. And then they basically said, "Hey, you need to start, you know, taking a harder look at this, because, you know, your contamination is, is more than fifteen percent."
True.
So, that's why, so that's why when, and, and we do have, we do have some issues with the communities that we pick up, you know, that, that are contracted with us, that have the carts and everything. But it's not at the level that, you know, you guys were at.
But that garbage truck operator, if he pulled off the site, he would know before he left that, the site, if it was acceptable or not, because the, the end loader operator's making a decision at that point, right?
Yeah, he should get it. When he gets a scale ticket on the end, that...
When, when, he doesn't get a scale ticket till he dumps his garbage.
Right, and then he pulls back.
No one's in there when we dump. I went out a couple of times, but no one's in there. And there's already recyclables in there. There's, you know, we'll back up to a, a recyclable pile that's already been dumped. I, I know that for a fact. More, you know, two times I went out two weeks ago, there was a bunch of recyclables, no one around.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have to move on. Uh, there's a lot to hear going on. We may have to make this a separate entity to discuss it. But basically, we're gonna do some improvement then with communication to the, the public. And then hopefully that, uh, operator of the garbage truck, when he can trade a dump, he can maybe make sure whether we were accepted those loads or not, that specific load, because he only goes out there one time, right? Once a day, he takes recyclables out. And then if we are rejected, then we end up paying the trash bill on top of that. We have to pay them for, uh, trash then. That, that, that recycle load is, say, twenty-two hundred pounds. If it's deemed to be trash, then we get billed for that?
Yeah, you just get billed for trash. And you don't get billed for the recyclables at all. And just if it goes to the landfills, then you, then you get to bill for it.
So, if that load gets rejected, we get billed as trash. So, it's a double way. I mean, not only does the recycle not get over there and, and help out the, the whole environment, we get billed for that.
Yeah, we're running around twice in time where it's there.
Well, let's, let's do this. I appreciate you being here. Thanks, Jim. Does it, any other council members have any questions? It's a challenge. We understand. And we've been doing recycling in our community, let's say, probably close to forty years. It's amazing how we started out, uh, Gabe was involved helping us. We were out there on West Brew Street for a while in a building there, and we had city employees recyc, uh, sorting. So, my challenge I see is in February, March, when we get the new garbage trucks, and we got two containers, one for garbage, one for recyclables, that driver of the garbage truck's not gonna get out and look in that, that, that bin. He's gonna grab that bin with an arm and it's gonna go into the garbage truck. And now we're really not able to spring these shoulders.
And that's, that's an issue when you, when you card a community. That's why education is key. There's, on the website, you can, I'm pretty sure that you can put a, uh, there's a, a sticker that you can put on, on the recycling can. Because all of our, all of our stickers, or all of our recycling containers, when they're dropped off, there's a mold, a hot mold, that's on the lid that tells you what residents, what tells residents what they can and cannot empty in there. So, if you guys can download that and turn it into a sticker, which I know you can because it's advertised on the, on there, you can place a sticker on, or even, uh, even a, a door hanger, because they're, they're all, they all have the handles. You know, you can put a door hanger on there so residents are familiar with what you should be putting in there and shouldn't be putting in there. Every, like I said, every little bit, every little bit helps. And Mayor, you're right, it's a constant, it's a constant educational process to get this, you know, and...
I didn't say that. I didn't have questions in reserve.
Yes.
Questions, because I'd like to see whether or not when they're dumping our load next to other loads, and we're getting, how you know whose load it is? Could be somebody else's?
We take a picture of our load every morning. We took a picture just in case against tonight. And I've sent Jim some pictures with arrows pointing at just a few plastics and just asking, "Why? Why was this one?"
It's, it's some of the stuff that you have...
Fifteen percent.
Yeah, some of the stuff that you had sent me is, 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 um, is that packing material that's wrapped in plastic, that styrofoam and stuff. You know, if, if, if there's a, if there's an empty TV box, or there's an empty box or something like sitting up by the curb, nine times out of ten, it's gonna have, it's gonna have the styrofoam in it.
Right.
You know, so that renders it, that renders it contaminated. You know, it, it's just, and like I said, with, ever since China stopped taking the material, and, and the places that we take it to have been getting more and more pickier, you know, or stricter, that, that, you know, causes us to do the same thing. Because we don't wanna burn that relationship we have with, with our vendor when they say, you know, "Hey, don't bring any more loads here, period, because you're not welcome." We don't want that. We don't want it to come to that. You know, so...
Jim, thank you very much. Any other council questions? And, uh, we, I have some suggestions. I, I'd like to go take a run in the morning when they do the recycling runs, uh, as far as out there, the trash, uh, the transfer station. What time does that truck leave the compound?
About quarter to five.
Okay, sounds good. Oh, yeah, I'll be up. You bet. Okay. Jim, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you guys, you know, Quint and everybody working with us to, to get this solved, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there any other public comment? All you have to do is, uh, Jenica, please. Welcome. Just say your name for the record, please.
I was gonna wait till the end, but I have to leave to go get into some... Hi, everyone. I'm Jenica Cole, Executive Director of the Chamber. I just wanted to thank, um, Ray and Jerry for coming this morning. We had a, a community partner breakfast with OSS Healthcare, and AJ, um, Corso Rosa, and Jackie Curran, who's the President of OSS St. Clair spoke. And then we were able to do a question and answer session, and it was, um, very well received. Um, after we were done for the morning, AJ actually came up to me and said, "We need to do another one of these for our community." So, that's something in the future, I think, would be nice if it was open to the entire public instead of invitation only. So, thank you guys for supporting and being there. Um, I also want to say, because Tori nudged me, um, unfortunately, Fear Co. Fest, we decided to reschedule from this past Saturday, which I think was the right call after we got through the day. Um, so that is going to be Saturday, October twenty-eighth. Same events, same activities, United Way Little Blue Truck Event will be going on, um, same times, just a different day. So, we hope that the weather will pan out, fingers crossed. Um, and I think that's it.
Thanks, Jen. Good. Thank you. Okay, any other public comments?
If you have a chance at the end of the meeting.
Okay, now we're gonna go to the minutes from the regular council meeting, October second, twenty twenty-three.
I move that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on October second, twenty twenty-three. Second.
We have a motion in second. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, clerk call role.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
Mayor Mabry?
Aye. Thank you. Now, we're gonna go to invoices, please.
Next on the agenda is the invoices. In the Department of Accounts and Finance, we have invoices totaling ninety-five thousand, six hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, we have invoices totaling two hundred and twenty thousand, two, two hundred twenty thousand, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling two hundred and six thousand, six hundred twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling five hundred and eighteen thousand, one dollar and twenty cents, for a grand total of one million, forty-one thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars and fifty-two cents. There are all council members present, have confirmed their reviews of all invoices, and now are submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, clerk call role.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCransky? McCransky?
Aye.
Mayor Mabry?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O dash twenty-three dash zero-one-six. This is an ordinance authorizing an employment agreement with the city manager. This is the second and final reading. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O dash two-three dash zero-one-six. Second.
We have a motion in second. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, clear call, roll.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
Mayor Mabry?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance O dash twenty-three dash zero-one-seven. This is an ordinance accepting the road improvements on East Century Drive. This is the first reading. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance, and it's submitted for disposition.
I move that we advance ordinance O dash two-three dash zero-one-seven to the second reading. Second.
We have a motion in second. Any questions from the council, comments? Does everybody kind of know where this drive is? It's that little dead-end street off of Soldiers and Sailors Park. No?
No.
Oh, sorry.
This is where First Aid Bank of Mendota is.
Oh, that one. I apologize. Hopefully it's the other one.
East Century Drive.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
So that's developed by the developer, which is First Aid Bank of Mendota. And now, to say me like a criteria, we take it over.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for correcting me. Okay, clear call, roll.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
Mayor Mabry?
Aye. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is resolution R dash twenty-three dash zero-one-eight. This is a resolution accepting a bid and awarding contract to key builders for an electric generation storage building for four hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve resolution R dash two-three dash zero-one-eight. Second.
Motion in second. Teresa, would you like to comment on this?
Sure. In your packet, sir, you do have the tabulation for the bids. As you can see, this is our second round of trying to go through this process, and we did make some changes after the first bid, to try and bring some of the costs down. Thank you, Jeff, because as all departments have said, go do great measures to try to keep costs down on this. So as you can see in the bids there, actually, they're all fairly close with the exception of the one. We did get some clarification on that, which kind of removed them from the competition here. We have highlighted key builders there in the tabulation. Feel questionable about not necessarily the lowest, given that they're very, very close in the bids and the timeline. Jeff did take that step to see how long it was gonna take to get some of the material. And as you know, things are taking forever. Their timeline fit. And then actually, in our purchase manual that we updated in 2020, on page fourteen, it does allow for preference for local companies. So we kind of went back and forth, and we felt comfortable making that decision based on how close the bids were to stick with the local company on this.
Good. Any other questions, comments from the council? Seeing none, clear call, roll.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
Mayor Mabry?
Aye. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is resolution R dash twenty-three dash zero-one-nine. This is a resolution accepting the bid and awarding a contract to Performance Piping Incorporated for relining a sanitary sewer for fifty thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move to reapprove resolution R dash two-three dash zero-one-nine.
Second. We have a motion in second. Any questions or comments? Clear call, roll.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
Mayor Mabry?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is resolution R dash twenty-three dash zero-two-zero. This is a resolution authorizing the sale of surplus real estate owned by the public body. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this resolution, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance R dash two-three dash zero-two-zero.
Second. We have a motion in second. Is there any questions or concerns or comments?
I've got a comment if I can. I got a call today from the resident who lives right next door to this property. This particular house has been sitting vacant and idle for over fifteen years. It is a disaster. It has an appraised value of sixteen thousand dollars. It's about ready to fall over. My concern is that if we put this property up for sale, that it's possible that it's gonna get bought up by a scrupulous landlord who will slap a coat of paint on it and rent it. The neighbor who has lived with and watched all the horrible things happen with this building is asking and pleading that maybe this building be demolished. And then sell the vacant land at the current going rate. I think that if we share some of the expense of knocking this building down and then offering to recover some of our expenses by selling the land, maybe even to this neighbor next door, this would be a fair and equitable solution.
I've gone kind of back and forth on those two. And I gotta say, I kind of agree with that. We've been fighting this for how many years, Pete?
Eighteen.
Eighteen years. We're finally at a point, and my feelings are kind of, it's, I think it's just a loss that we need to, it's gonna cost us money. I get it. But in the end, we could some find land. I think it's the right way to go.
I think it's right for the community as well. I think it speaks volumes to us saying that we understand this has been a nice job forever. Let's get it outside. Let's clean it up. Let's make it look nice.
Marty, I can read with the other councilman on that very much so.
Okay, well, I appreciate the council's input. So I'd like to just give some thoughts here. The challenge I face is the deed had got some estimates. So the home has got some asbestos, which when we say asbestos, we all get a little nervous. But it was down in the basement in some piping. Is that right, Pete? Wrapped around the piping, which is somewhat common to have that happen in older homes. And so if we as a city decide to take over the demolition, but we have to remove the asbestos by a licensed contractor, and then we have to go ahead and hire a contractor to tear the house down, haul away, and then we're probably gonna go ahead and fill a hole in. So we're gonna have some costs incurred there that could exceed twenty thousand dollars. We ran some numbers in executive session discussing this. One of the things is, as it stands right now, with resolution R twenty-three zero-two-zero, on the fourth paragraph, it says, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city Princeton, that the city advertised for requests for proposals from potential owners describing their utilization of the space and monetary offer for the property. So I personally think that if we took it out for sale, let's understand that people are gonna be submitting a request for proposal. We are asking to that, and we are receiving those from potential buyers. And we won't have to accept those buyers' proposals if we decide that it's not satisfactory for our long-term goal. So that's my thinking is that you've got a paragraph there that gives you the opportunity to get it sold to somebody that's either gonna tear it down themselves, or actually do a good job of renovating it and putting it back on the tax rolls. So I don't have a support in this. I respect each side.
Are you saying that the only proposals we would accept would be demolished?
I think that as those proposals come in, there'll be people that'll say, okay, I want to give X amount of dollars for it, and this is why, because I am gonna tear it down. I am gonna build on it, or I'm a neighbor that wants to tear it down and control it. Or somebody may say, this is what I'm paying for, and this is the list of things I'm gonna do. This is who I am. Here's my track record. I've renovated three or four properties in Princeton that have gone back on tax rolls. And at one time, in those councils' concern about properties going on tax rolls, we had arguments to pass over properties, whether they've got sold or go on tax rolls or not. So I would rather try option A first. And we still have, council has to approve this. So every one of you that are against it or not in favor of saying, we'll have the opportunity to vote against it if you felt that we weren't where we needed to be with proposals.
I think my problem with that is how much longer will we sit on it until we find the right buyer? And then once we go through that process, how much time is it gonna take them to renovate or clean up the ice? Or I guess in general, could we be sitting on this for another year or two, when the residents next door, what they kind of had to put up with, I guess is my concern.
And we don't know if whoever buys this, Mike, is gonna do what he or she says they're gonna do. We just don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, they can...
I have my thoughts on it.
No, I agree. I agree. I think it's, the neighbor has no recourse. I mean, if this gets sold out from under him, and somebody doesn't do the right thing with this building, he's right back where he started from eighteen years ago.
Yeah.
I just don't think that's right.
Well, I appreciate the comments and concerns. I always go back to our benchmark is, three years ago, when we were wrestling over chickens, we had the house in the six-hundred block in North Chestnut. Three years later, you don't want to live next to that home. And we have, is that gonna be the next home we'll be trying to acquire and tear down? I don't know. I just feel like, but I appreciate the council's comments and concerns. So with that said, I don't think we're having enough votes to pass this anyway. At this point, you're, what we are gonna do is vote, right?
We're gonna vote.
Okay.
We voted for it.
Okay, let's go ahead. And if there are any questions or comments, we'll go ahead and clear call, roll. Okay? Go ahead.
Okay, councilmember Newman?
No.
McCall?
Aye.
McCransky?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Mayor Mabry?
Yes.
So there we go, the old-fashioned standoff.
The amount of fails.
Yeah.
The time is failed.
Yeah, that's correct.
We'll go back and discuss this some more and make sure that we feel comfortable with what we're doing. And I would say this, we'll ask Pete, if you would, or Teresa, whoever wants to take this task on, to make sure we know our numbers on the demolition, so we can get an accurate number on the asbestos removal and an accurate number on the demolition, and then we can revisit those accurate numbers. Okay, I'm open-minded. Okay, very good. Thank you, council. And now we're to the city manager report.
In your package, you have fire pitch report for August of 2023. Before I go further on the list here, before I forget, just an announcement that we have opened a sealed bid process for a brush truck with the fire department. They'll be opened through eleven three of twenty-three at ten a.m. And it is a 2002 Chevy Silverado, 2500 H D S. I think it's a Duramax, four-by-four diesel. Only has eleven thousand miles on it. So if you've got interest in it, we are taking the sealed bids right now. You can go on Facebook for all the details. You know the fire department, the way they keep their equipment, it's pretty much spotless. So it'll be a very good purchase for somebody. So if you're interested, look on Facebook for details or just reach out to us. Also, in your, in your packet, I handed you a letter in regards to the solar project that we were looking at months back. Jeff, I'll let you jump in wherever you'd like to here. They are considering some new proposals for this type of project. Not to say that it's a for sure thing, but they do want some commitment from the city, and I guess the city, I'm saying you, Mayor, that the site that is being considered at the transfer station is the one that we are going to stick to before they do any more due diligence with us. So you have a letter in front of you, and it's basically all it says is that's the site that we're gonna hone in on. And then following this letter, or actually with this letter, we'll have to have a resolution. So the resolution would be at the next meeting. So mainly want to give you the letter, think about it. And then if the mayor is ready to sign this, we'll get this ready to go and have a resolution ready for the next meeting. So Jeff, do you want to add anything to it?
Yeah, it's just the original vendor that we were dealing with back when we were looking at the tech park. There was some issues there. It's actually in litigation now. But the I M A has been speaking with other vendors to see what the interest level is. And it seems to be out there. So they're thinking December, January, that they're gonna go out for RFPs for our site, Oplesby and Marshall, the same three that they did originally.
The first one we had, the I M A go without vendors, it was vice versa, the way it kind of came about.
Yeah, I M A goes out for RFPs. They're all over again.
And then this, this location is, we can put three megawatts out there, and it's...
Without doing any upgrades on our side.
It's costing taxpayers nothing because there was some, I don't know, transparency, whatever it was, first time. There's a lot of things going back and forth as to what the difference would be out here. We originally told it would cost fifty thousand dollars out there. But now, there's no cost to putting in, as long as the soil sample and all this stuff come back, there's no cost to anybody putting that in and having a much larger revenue.
Now, that's, that's fairly accurate. We may incur some costs because we changed locations. They already spent their money out at the tech park, so they may come back to us and say, since you changed locations, we want you to, you know, put up the other money for the boring, the boring and stuff like that. But other than that, no, it shouldn't, there shouldn't be any cost.
And how many times, do you think they'll be able to expand it? Once, twice?
Well, it depends on what size they decide. I think they're probably gonna go with a one-meg solar field to start out with.
A three?
Well, they may approach that. It all comes with what the vendor wants to do. He may not want to do that large one. He may. I, you know, it could be up to a three. I'll say that. But it could start out as a one with additions later on.
But threes are max.
Without doing any upgrades, I guess.
The sooner they get this letter, the better, in terms of getting a commitment from the city that we're interested in.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, there's no immediate runoff.
Yeah.
We want to keep moving. So Teresa, obviously, we're gonna go ahead and sign that letter whenever you're ready for the next city council meeting. Yep. That's quite right. There we go. Thank you, Teresa.
I want to backtrack to the bids that we did accept, actually, for the Park Lane sewer lining. Just to make note that the bid was actually put in for fifty thousand, two hundred and twenty thousand. Twenty thousand of that is an allowance for unseen issues. So it could actually come in much lower, just so. And we did budget for the fifty, but it'd be great if we can come in at thirty thousand. That would be a huge bonus. I was gonna mention that earlier, but we flew through that really quick. Last thing on here is trick-or-treating hours. Will be from five till eight on Tuesday, the 31st. As always, lead your porcelain on if you are handing out candy. And obviously, if you're trick-or-treating, please be mindful of wearing visible clothing and watching for traffic at all times. Vehicle drivers should do their best to be mindful of low visibility costumes, and children crossing the roadway at any time. So just to be aware, it'll be on Halloween from five to eight p.m. What day of the week is that?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah, on Tuesday. Kind of weird. I think...
These are last years.
Five, eight, yeah. Yeah. And I think that's all I have now.
Very good. Thank you, Teresa. Appreciate that. So now we're gonna go to the mayor's report. And on that, we have an appointment for the Princeton Public Library Board of Trustees, please.
I move that we appoint to the Princeton Public Library Board of Trustees, Chris Jepson for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2026.
Have a motion in second. Is there any questions or comments? Clear call, roll.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
McCransky?
Aye.
Mayor Mabry?
Aye. Thank you. And now we're gonna go to a building permit update given to us by Pete Nelson.
I just wanted to give a rough idea, give you a rough idea of kind of where we are in the process this year. We've issued about forty-one permits so far.
You don't think I carried that?
Make it easier for you. We've issued about forty-one permits so far. Usually, the most important one is how many, how much housing have we developed? We've never really recapped or recaptured our pace of around 2005 of about ten houses a year. Since 2008, we've only done one or two houses, and we're kind of in that same ballpark. We have one single-family home and one duplex that's been permanent this year so far. I will tell you that the most popular thing right now is fences. I don't know if it's because it's dogs or neighbors. But Robert Frost always said, good fences build good neighbors, right? Anyway, we have lots of fences, sheds and garages with an estimated value of about three hundred thousand dollars. I will mention that the single-family home and the one duplex together value about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. As far as commercial permits go, we have Ollies, we have Flight Manufacturing out in the industrial park, and then also an expansion by their sister company, Princeton Flying, at about four hundred and ten thousand. The Flight Manufacturing is about three hundred and eighty thousand. Ollies is about fifty-eight million. Princeton Chevrolet is adding a building for twenty thousand dollars. And a lot of people may have kind of noticed, but the old days... And, uh, a lot of people may have kind of noticed, but the, uh, the old Days Inn is actually putting two-and-a-half million dollars into their property to rebrand it and meet the new specs of a, of a new brand. So, um, that is one property that will be, uh, great to have brought into the twentieth century. Um, you also may have, might have noticed that the old High Rowan property, after twenty years, has been sold. And there's two entrepreneurs who have, uh, purchased that property. It's about twenty acres and a two-hundred-and-ten-thousand square foot building. Um, one of them has already, uh, gotten, uh, hold of, um, kind of changing the front facade. Uh, he is using the property to, uh, have a business where you can, uh, store large vehicles, like boats and large RVs, either inside or outside. Um, the other part of the building is still kind of in development, um, and, uh, my guess is that'll be some sort of warehousing also over time. But that entrepreneur will, uh, be announcing that as soon as he's ready to do so. One thing that, uh, is a sign of the times and something that we're not, um, sort of, it's starting to become more popular, are, uh, solar installations. And this year so far, we've had two residential solar installations and one commercial solar installation, with a value combined of about a hundred-and-eighty thousand, four hundred dollars. So it's, um, it can be expensive up, expensive upfront, but, uh, some of these people are moving forward anyway. And, uh, last year, we had, uh, probably another three, uh, three residential, uh, installations. So, it's slowly gaining a little bit of momentum, and, uh, you'll be seeing more and more of those going on. So, that's kind of where we are for now, Mayor.
Very good, thank you, Pete, for putting that together. Um, we're gonna go ahead now and go to Positively Princeton, I'm gonna step down here to the podium. Okay, yeah, you may have noticed, we have some new microphones out here, we have some new speaker systems, so, uh, we appreciate Stephen McConnell, he worked on that, uh, was a contractor, and, and so if you go home and in a couple days you wanna watch the video, or have your friends watch the video on YouTube, you'll be able to hear better and, uh, understand, or what's going on here better, so. And we encourage people that, um, that they should, can't be here for a council meeting, certainly it's a great way to know what's happening at a council meeting, if they just watch that video. Um, Friday, I'll be going to a conference in Naperville, um, and it's on sustainable landscapes in a, in a community environment. And it's just an all-day class, I signed up for it, I'm, uh, paying for this out of my own tab here. I just wanna go up to Naperville, you always can learn a lot, when you go up there in that area anyway, ideas that you can bring back to Princeton. And this is how communities get involved with, uh, sustainable, um, landscaping, with flowers, with things like that. Uh, two weeks ago, I had the chance to go over to Ottawa and have lunch with, uh, previous, or former mayor Bob Eschbach, Eschbach, uh, who was the mayor of Ottawa for twenty years, and he was instrumental in getting downtown Ottawa where it is today. And, uh, they have a lot of what they call bumpouts, and a lot of, a lot, a lot of landscape, uh, and green space. Um, and I, I, he tells a story that, um, I won't mention the name of, of a company, but they came in, and they spent multi-million dollars, uh, downtown Ottawa, and one of the pivoting points of them going to Ottawa versus another community investing this money, was the owner walked the downtown of Ottawa and said, wow, I like the flowers, I like what I see, I like the trees, we're gonna invest in Ottawa. So, we always can learn from other communities, and, and I think we've done a fine job. The previous mayor, uh, Querem, did a nice job getting those trees started, and we continue to do that with our, our trees going up now Main Street, now we're going over to Elm Place, and also, we're gonna be going out, uh, across the road, tracks adding more trees. Um, they've got a pretty audacious goal of planting a hundred trees in the next twelve months. Uh, and that's, and I think they've got about twenty down, so, and, and they're using, obviously, Quint is, uh, his department's learning how to plant trees, and, and so, Johnny Appleseed out there. So, uh, kudos to our community on understanding how we need to have walkability, uh, pedestrian-friendly downtown communities. It's, it's just, uh, a win-win for everybody. So, this evening, uh, we go to, um, exciting news of new businesses that come into Princeton. And a business that I spotted about, oh, maybe four months ago, that, uh, was, uh, was moved into the, what we call the old, um, Midwest Bus Building. For you folks, uh, would be, jump across the interstate, and just before you get to the, uh, entrance to the City County Park, on the east side is this metal building that has been sitting empty. I think Midwest Bus moved out about four years ago, and that building has been sitting empty. So, a company came in, uh, they're utilizing the facility, it's a family-run company, uh, and tonight, we're gonna hear more about that, uh, business. And we have Jake Miller here, he's the president of Kindred Seven. So Jake, come on up and tell us about Kindred Seven, please, we're glad to have you.
How's it going, everyone?
Good.
Um, I'd like to introduce myself, uh, my name's Jake Miller, uh, I'm one of the owners of, uh, Kindred Seven. There are five owners total, um, there are Whitney Lucas, Shelby Miller, uh, Kendall Scott, and Reese Miller. Um, our, uh, our father, uh, has been in the woodworking industry, um, business for about forty years. Um, nineteen ninety-five, uh, Illinois Valley Millworks was opened in Mendota. At the time, we did, uh, custom stair rails, pine boxers, and custom cabinets. As we went on, we had our own mill, uh, where we could make all of our own, uh, stair parts. And we also started supplying exterior doors, uh, interior, interior doors and trim. Uh, all the family worked at Illinois Valley Millworks. Um, I started working full-time in two thousand twenty, uh, two thousand three, after I graduated high school. Along with my brothers and my sisters, all started working full-time after they were out of high school as well. Um, after the economic recession in two thousand fourteen, uh, we were required by an investor to continue to grow the company to what, um, our father had vision to one day, um, in the future. We purchased the old Donant Building in Mendota, um, and we added a full cabinet shop, which could produce about three hundred cabinets a day in one single shift. Um, from then, two thousand fourteen, two thousand twenty-two, we tripled the company in those years. Um, and as a family, in March of this year, we decided to get back to, I guess, the family business. Um, the family roots, and we decided to refire. So, Kindred's had an open here in Mendota, uh, we looked for a while, um, there wasn't much out there as far as what would, you know, help us, um, get to where we wanted to be. Um, we plan to continue to do what we did for all those years in Mendota, um, same product, products, cabinets, custom cabinets, custom kitchens, vanity, stairs, rails, doors, trim, you name it, pretty much anything inside of a house, so. Um, we supply a lot of builders, um, from Chicago, Indiana, Wisconsin, um, Iowa, about a hundred and fifty mile radius, so. Um, pretty good, pretty good circle. Um, we also, um, any walk-ins, you know, locally, anybody wants to redo a kitchen, or stairs, rails, you name it, you know, we, we take in walk-ins, um, take in walk-ins as well. Um, we already have contracts for two thousand twenty-four, um, and as that is right now, we're already past our, like, third-year goal, so, uh, which is pretty amazing. Um, with, you know, starting over, I guess you could say, and trying to get that family business, we knew it was gonna be hard, but, um, with a lot of relationships throughout all those years, it's really helped as well, so. It's pretty much it, so.
We're glad you chose Princeton, thank you very much.
Yeah, no, we, uh, it's crazy, you know, we talk about it a lot, um, you're only twenty minutes away, and the difference between the two towns, I mean, the amount of people, I mean, nice people, um, very, very busy. I mean, it's, it's crazy how much different it is, so we're excited, we're excited to be here, and, uh, yeah.
The council, any questions before you?
How many employees?
Um, right now, fifteen to twenty, we're looking like, yeah, and I mean, we don't know, it could get bigger than that. Um, just see where, where we wanna take it, um, how it well goes, so, about fifteen or twenty right now, so, yeah.
So the business in Mendota is staying open, or are you relocating?
Uh, yeah, that, we, uh, we kind of just, um, parted ways. Um, like I said, uh, just decided to refire the family business, with a lot of things just, uh, went in the direction we didn't like, so, um, we wanted to get back to the roots, and, uh, they're still open today, um, as far as what's going on there, we don't know, but, uh, so.
Yeah, we're glad you chose Princeton.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I think I told my first give as a, or as a mayor now, I told Jake, I said, Jake, would you just give a few minutes of some business, uh, real quick, and then we'll get you on board, so, and now it's seven o'clock, uh, you know, it's interesting, uh, I remember, uh, people told me in the past, you'll have passionate discussions over the most interesting things, and, and we understand. Recycling is a very, you know, we recycle in our household, and Jerry, I'm not calling you out, but when you got rejected for two weeks in a row, you, you are the, you're the epitome of recycling. I mean, you're, you're Mr. Rogers of recycling, so I knew we had a problem going on, uh, so, but anyway, yeah.
You had a cutting board in that recycling.
Is that, I, I don't know, I, I say.
I had a provision.
Okay, well, anyway, there we go. So, so I just wanna say to everybody, thanks for your patience, and, but it, it is, uh, recycling is, uh, is a critical thing, even more so now than ever. Like I said, we've been doing this for forty years, we still haven't gotten it right in many ways, and, and I think the people that, that do all the work of recycling, they wanna get it right, so, again, it just goes back to education, that's all, that's all. So we're gonna get there. So that's it for tonight's Positively Princeton, and, um, we'll be back, uh, we do have a, and it's not a teaser, but we have a company that has looked at Princeton, that is, wants to bring manufacturing to town, and we're gonna talk more about that in about, hopefully about thirty to forty-five more days, so we don't want to jinx it tonight. But it's a, it's a company that would be bringing, uh, new jobs to Princeton, uh, that's, uh, that would be, uh, not currently in Princeton, and the jobs will not, uh, cannibalize from current jobs that are here, so. It's what we call true new growth, just like with the Kindred Seven, that's true new growth, which we appreciate, so, thank you very much. Okay, now, is there any old business coming before the council this evening? Okay, uh, seeing none, is there any new business coming for the council? All right, none, uh, any additional public comment?
I do have a quick.
Absolutely. Victoria, come on up.
I'll be quick. Just an update from the tourism department. We've, uh, for many years, have been trying to, um, figure out how to, uh, collect the five percent tax from our short-term lodging enterprises, and, um, we're making some moves with that, uh, working with, um, an auditing company as of ours, so, um, I would like to extend an invitation. Um, formal invitations will go out in the mail tomorrow, um, to all short-term lodging enterprise owners. We're gonna have a meet and greet, um, uh, question-answer, answer session, and, um, be able to, you know, also work on building a network with all of the owners in town, so. I invite everyone to come next, um, before the next council meeting on November sixth, uh, at five o'clock P.M. here in the council chambers.
Victoria, add to that, how many Airbnbs do we have in Princeton?
Um, I believe twenty-one, uh, 'cause I just found out about another Airbnb, so. The number changes a lot, and it's pretty incredible that we have that many Airbnbs in our community, so.
Good for you.
Yes.
Thanks, Victoria.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Oh, there we go, Jerelyn?
I'm Geraldine Woodley, no eclipse story tonight, Chloe. Uh, just a suggestion, somebody said to include the information about recycling with the bills, but most of us, I think, get it through email, so couldn't you just attend? You're looking at me, Chloe?
No.
When, when we get our utility bill?
Can you get yours, like, now?
That's a direct deposit, so.
I would do both. I would, yeah. We'll make it work both ways.
It's true direct deposit, but we'll, we'll look into it, but I, I don't know, I don't know if I want to set a seven thousand customer database for email, and see what we can figure out.
Isn't it, I mean, I don't know how to do that stuff, but I just assume you just press a couple buttons and it just goes down.
But we'll see, we'll see.
We'll let you come in and do it.
We'll see, we'll see how smoothly we can cut it out, okay?
I wanted to make it easy, rather than sending stuff in the paper.
I think that city, the city website's gonna do a great, uh, app, uh, media, uh, tweet a little bit, so, the city's website.
And if you can, just put it in the paper, you know.
What paper?
Oh, there it is.
Definitely told me on the last block, I gave it to the newspaper.
And we are glad to have both media here tonight, we appreciate that. It's, uh, for a while there, it was getting pretty slim, and Jay's provided you both seats, so thank you. Um, any other public comments? Okay, seeing none.
I move to adjourn our regular meeting this evening, and reconvene for our next council meeting on Monday, November sixth, twenty-twenty-three, six o'clock at City Hall.
Second, we have a motion and second, clear call roll?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
McCall? McCransky?
Aye.
Mayor Mabry?
Aye, this meeting's adjourned, feel free to stick around and visit.